Your board meeting of the Board of County Commissioners Tuesday, January 23rd. It's, it is nine o'clock. I am Commissioner Harvey. So I'll be calling this to order and we're going to ask the Reverend Ted Stackpole Chaplain to Foster Care Community come up and lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Bill Pickens will lead us in our pledge if y'all would rise if you're able to do so.
Could we bow our heads together? Graciously Heavenly Father, as we gather here today in this place, we bow our hearts and humble our hearts before you, the Creator, Sustainer of all things. We recognize, acknowledge your sovereignty over our lives, our community, and our nation. We are grateful for the opportunity to come together with the Putnam County Commissioners to deliberate and make decisions that will shape the future of our county. Lord, we seek your guidance and wisdom as we embark on this important meeting today. May your divine presence fill this room permitting our thoughts and actions so that all decisions made will align with your perfect will. We acknowledge that true wisdom comes from you and we humbly ask for your wisdom to guide us as we address the needs of the people that are being served. Heavenly Father, we pray for unity and harmony among all our commissioners recognizing their diversity and ideas and backgrounds. May your spirit of understanding, empathy, and respect prevail in these discussions fostering an atmosphere conducive to productive collaboration and cooperation. Lord, we are aware of the many challenges that face our county, from social needs to economic development to environmental concerns, and we ask your divine intervention and insight to find the best solutions for these issues, always keeping the well-being of our community at the forefront of our minds. In this assembly, Lord, we recognize the importance of seeking your righteousness and justice. May the decisions today reflect your heart for the vulnerable, the marginalized, and the needy among us. Give us hearts filled with compassion and empathy, leading us to act with fairness and benevolence. And lastly, Heavenly Father, we ask for your divine protection and guidance over our residents of Putnam County. We lift up our law enforcement officers, firefighters, medical professionals, teachers, and all those who serve and protect our community. Surround them with your love and grant them wisdom and discernment in their daily calls to duty in your holy and precious name of Jesus. I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Reverend Stackpole and thank you Commissioner Pickens. Do have some honored guests in the room today. The retired Honorable Tim Smith, Clerk of the Court, thank you for joining us today. Look forward to that. And we have Baby Baker over here to my left and right. You can hold him for a small fee, right? Okay, Commissioner, down to business here if you don't mind. Approval of the minutes of the special called meeting.
Mr. Chair, I may have approval of the Board of County Commissioners' special meeting called January 4th, 2024.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Rich, I didn't bang the gavel. Should I have to go back and do that? We're good. Good deal. Good deal. Alright, so now, we're going to recess our Board of County Commission meeting and I'm going to call to order our Port Authority meeting. And the first item of business is the administration. I'm assuming, Julianne, you have this animal services facility layout plan?
Yes, sir. Thank you. As presented in your packet, we have met with the design-build contractor and we have reviewed several different options for layouts and locations. And what we're proposing to you today is they're drawn, although I did look and the scan is not very clear. It was brought to my attention. Apologize for that scan being not very clear, but it is going to be just north of the EMS main station in that parking lot area. The area is currently used just as parking for vehicles that are being transitioned out of service. And so we will relocate that area and the compaction of that area along with the proximity to current infrastructure makes that our most recommended option for the layout and location.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Mr. Turner, you have a question?
Yes. After reviewing the packet, I don't have an issue with it going in, in the area of where you're going in, but I don't think you should build it on top of the compacted lime rock. I think you should move it right off the edge of it to the north and use compacted lime rock for base for the parking that has to be put in later on. That'll save a lot more money than trying to not only dig through the lime rock, and it's not going to make any difference as far as compaction under the building. It has to reach a certain point anyhow. So my suggestion would be to move it just a little further to the north to where it's not sitting on the lime rock and we can use it for base to pave later, which will save the county money because we're doing the site work in-house.
Yes, sir.
Good point. Mr. Adams, you have the floor.
Yeah, I'll concur with what Commissioner Turner just said, but I also want to make sure on the two kennel buildings that they're facing in a way that if we extended them, that the area that we can go off where the peaks of the roof go aim towards the back of the property or whatever direction we're going to extend them and not butt it against each other because that would defeat the purpose of being able to extend one of the buildings.
Yes, sir. They're both laid out. There's, there's area between the two. However, the, the expansion plan would be another standalone building, not necessarily just extending the rafters, although possible because they are northwest facing so that for the, to avoid direct, to avoid minimum exposure of direct sun during those summer months of an animal, right? We want the, the rafters to be like that. But you could expand, however, probably the more efficient expansion plan would be another kennel pod. That was the, the overall concept when we designed it.
Okay, good. Because I asked that specific question that we could expand the buildings.
You can.
Could we possibly stack the one behind the other then? And that would allow you to do that instead of next to each other?
Yeah, there's plenty of room.
And that still gives you the sun exposure and allows you to expand. I just send the picture. I can't tell which way the building faces. It just isn't clear.
But it would prob-
Go ahead.
But it would probably make it harder to deal with from the office back and forth if you had to walk all the way around one building to get to the other building to bring animals up front for the people to look at, to adopt, or whatever, because all that's going to be done in the office area.
Right. Which is why I preferred the original plan of having the building attached and going two different directions, but that's a whole different subject. So we're dealing with what we have.
The problem that they ran into with that issue is that the office building would always smell like kennels if you attached those two buildings together unless you spent a lot of money on, on scrubbers to get the-
And noise. Noise when you're, when you're in the office, having a little bit of separation. But the buildings, as it, as it is laid out, the buildings will be erected so that the kennels are north-south facing and the entry-exit doors are east-west facing. You asked about the site plan. And so there will be opportunity for further expansion by erecting an entire new pod, or you could of course always add on. However, probably most efficient would be another, another pod.
Well, if you could determine where the lime rock stops on the north side of the existing parking lot, I would probably move it back another three or maybe four feet. That way when we put flowers and landscaping and whatever in front of it, we're not having to dig up lime rock to do that either. So-
I agree. Plus, on the north side, we own, we own 60 acres out there. We got plenty of room. So, so what do you need from us? A motion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the, the new layout with the changes that were just made as far as moving the building to the north off the lime rock.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Do we have any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign?
Aye.
Okay, four to one. And thank God this is moving forward. So looking, looking forward to groundbreaking coming up very soon, hopefully. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items only? This is a chance for the public to comment for three minutes on Port Authority items. And seeing no one rushed to the front, we will close the public comment. And is there any general discussion on Port Authority items from Commissioners? And seeing none, we will adjourn the Port Authority meeting, reconvene the Board of County Commission meeting. And Ms. Lori Parker, you're up next. And this is the time the whole Baker family arrives, right? Good morning.
I'm happy to announce the Employee of the Quarter for fiscal year, first quarter, and that would be Zach Baker. On behalf of Zach Baker, Baby Baker will be accepting the award.
Well, Zach does have a new pair of shoes. I mean, those are pretty-
I know. We have to get that in the picture. He has to sit stand up front.
They got here way before he did this morning.
Well, this is the award for the Employee of the Quarter for first quarter. In addition, he does get $500-
Wow.
-for being Employee of the Quarter. And there you go, Zach. Thank you.
Mrs. Baker, you know what to do with that, right?
Yes.
Scholarship fund.
Yes.
So I get to be a part of Zach's life, which has been a wonderful thing. We've worked over the last eight months together. And coming into new facilities, sometimes different, but Zach has been nothing but professional, loving. When he's dealing with citizens, he's always looking to get the best out of them and for the easiest route to get there. So he goes above and beyond. Thank you to his family for letting us have them all the time that you give them to us and the little Baker. So he's been a big part of us too. But I just want to thank Zach and what he means to me and to the planning area. He's, he doesn't have the true stigma of a planner, but he is a planner. So it's a great thing to be around him and I'm just thrilled to be a part of his life.
Very good.
Thank you. Very good. Zach, I think you made a- Two things. You put your envelope in your pocket. It goes to your wife. And the baby lost a sock somewhere between here and there. So we'll figure that one out. Zach, do you have any words you'd like to say? Sure.
Thank you again for the recognition. It's, it's an honor to be in front of you all, accepting this award. It's an honor to have my family here today. Planning is doing and we're going to get it done, no matter what.
Introduce your family if you don't mind.
So from left to right, y'all's right to left, you've got my grandmother Lucy, my mom Carleen, my wife Courtney, and my son Kason. And then in the back, my father Earl.
Good deal. Well, congratulations. Can you stay up here today, you think?
Probably with that.
Okay.
I love their shoes, man.
(laughter)
Laurie, I figured you'd have handed the check straight to her.
I really would have.
You gotta learn this. For a long marriage.
Three, two, one.
Deal.
Congratulations, Zach. Well deserved.
Yes, sir.
If you're not moving that. Congrats, Zach.
Our next recognition is a retirement recognition, and this is for Sam Willis. Sam Willis was the Utility Services Director, and he has been with the county for over 14 years, and he's been many, many years at the city. I don't know his combined total, but he's about to come up here and tell us. This is a retirement plaque for Sam in recognition for his service to the citizens of Putnam County.
Sam, you bringing your wife up too, please?
Come on. Boss says come on, so come on. For once I get to tell her what to do.
That's the last time.
Well, today, I guess the clock hit zero, right? Because ever since I started with the county, Sam had a retirement clock. And at any given moment, at any given day, you could always ask him how much longer he had. And it's pretty much down to the minute. But I hope he wishes the best in his retirement. You know, it's not often you get to see somebody that started the utility system, right, in the county. So I think Sam has been here almost since day one. So there's a lot of institutional knowledge that we're hoping he's going to be around. I think we've called him a few times. He's always been willing to come, still come back in, step up and help us. And we truly just wish him the best in his retirement. He's spent a lot, a lot of time and years in the industry. And not most people don't get the same title as he gets, but he's truly a legend in his own, in his, in his own field. So not, not in his mind, like he said behind me, but in his field. I mean, you can go anywhere, everybody knows who Sam is. So it was an honor and pleasure serving with Sam, and we wish him the absolute best in retirement. Sam, I'm sure you have something to say, right? Start, start, start the countdown there, Mr. Turner.
Be nice, Sam. Be nice.
Okay, we got, we're going to give you one minute.
Dead gummit, if I gotta be nice. I was told I could say anything I wanted. But no. This, this has been a culmination of 50 years in the business and it was something I was literally born into. My father was a wastewater operator and a water plant operator. My grandfather was a well driller. So it kind of comes naturally to me. And quite honestly, I've lasted longer here than I thought I would because I typically have a five-year shelf life with government and then I find myself moving on. I brought my family with me today, not just my immediate family, which is my wife, but also my extended family, which includes the people I've had the honor and pleasure of working with, different ones over the last 15 years here. And I won't introduce all of them because I lead up all my time. But it's, it's been, it's been fun. I'm going to miss everybody, some more than others. But I will still be around. My next move will be to the cemetery, but not too soon, I hope. And as JR said, I've got a lot of, there's a lot going on up here. The people that follow me, unlike the old days where the guy that had everything in his head was the, the one that you wanted not to have the stroke, there are a lot of stuff, there is a lot of stuff that's on paper and, and got capable people running the systems now. My replacements have stepped up and are doing a wonderful job from what I understand. But I'll still be around for those times when they say, "Didn't we do something over here?" So thank you again for 15 years, 14 and a half years, and I appreciate it. And thank you for, for the, for the plaque and the recognition.
Sam, hang on just a minute. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have a comment?
Yeah, Sam, I just want to say I appreciate all the interactions that we've had over the few years that I've been here and that what I feel was honesty about different questions that I've had and clarity that helped me make decisions here on the board. And that goes for a lot of the people standing behind you as well. And I wish you the best of luck in your retirement and look forward to following what you do.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sam, I've known you for a long time. Back to the days of Paint Your Pride.
Paint Your Pride, yes, sir.
And Peter coming in and-
You were one of Grandma's favorites.
She tipped well. But she was a lovely lady, your mother.
Well, that, that was, that was the well driller's wife. So she understood what it was like to be deep in the hole.
I get it. But you've always been honest with me, sometimes brutally honest, but I need that. Don't ever lose sight that our, our employees need to be able to talk to Commissioners in a manner that we need to understand. And sometimes we, we hear from the public, we hear from staff, and then we have to disseminate what's the best thing to do. But when we get the honest answer, we can handle that. We can always work with that. And you've always been there to give me the honest answer that I needed, whether I liked it or not. And I wish you well in your retirement, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Welcome. Alright, anybody else?
I do.
Yes.
Yeah, Sam, we've known each other probably through my brother for well over 25 years. And Sam popped in my store about 20 years ago and found that he was somewhat related to my secretary. So anyway, Sam would always stop in when he was in his private business sector and just chit chat and stuff like that. But I appreciate our relationship here when I was, as a Commissioner, and you're always available to answer my questions. The biggest problem I had was to figure out whether I was going to call you, calling you on my, on your personal phone or the county phone, but you answered both of them for me. So I wish you and Judy well in the retirement and, and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill.
Sam, like everybody else, we've known each other a long time, more years than I'm willing to say.
Yeah, that, yeah. Let's, let's leave it at that, yeah.
I want to wish you congratulations on your retirement and thank you for your service to the county all these years.
Well, thank you. Terry, I appreciate it. We've gone, been through a lot together, individually, collectively, as friends and as fellow public servants. So it's-
Anybody else? Good deal. We'll come up here, we'll get our picture taken, and we're going to stand back here with you. Bring up everybody.
It's on. Thank you, sir.
God bless your brother.
Thank you, sir.
Brother, be a little, little closer.
I'm not about to wave. I'm just, I'm just changing positions.
Alright, Sam, good luck. Okay, now we're going to close our presentation and go into our Planning and Development Public Hearing. And we'll give our planners time to get down here. So Baby Baker's not helping you on the presentation today? Our first case is our rezone, REZ 23-00010. And whenever you're ready to go, we are Board, let me remind you that this is a meeting one of two. So we're going to be getting the presentation today and then setting a date and time for the next meeting.
10 acre in a PUD? I don't think we have seen this one twice, do we?
10.2, it's in our packet that was meeting one of two per Florida statute. So, yep. Go right ahead.
Put that in there.
The rezone is over 10 acres.
Right.
So we need to do, we had one planning commission and we need to do the two VOC meetings. Jennifer Gassell for the record, Planning and Development Services. This application is a zoning map amendment from commercial retail C2 to commercial intensive C4. The applicant is Carlton Florida Estate LLC, John Carlton Jr. The agent is John Bruce. The property is located at 1370 North Highway 17 in Palaca, consisting of two parcels. Parcel number 13-08-26-0000-0030-0000. Second parcel ending in 0030-0030. The two subject parcels combined are approximately 10.26 acres. The current future land use is commercial and the current zoning is commercial retail C2. The proposal is to amend the zoning map to allow for a clearing contractor yard and heavy equipment storage and repair. Parcel ending in 0030-000 is 6.39 acres and has approximately 635 feet of frontage on Highway 17 and is currently improved with a 4,000 square foot warehouse. Parcel number ending in 0030-0030 is 3.87 acres and has approximately 212 feet of frontage on Highway 17 and is currently vacant. The parcel is located in a portion of the corridor where commercial development has occurred on the lands that have maintained a commercial future land use classification. The surrounding zoning designations are commercial and agricultural. The surrounding future land uses are commercial, industrial, commercial, and agricultural. The majority of those lands are vacant or contain a passive use like communication towers. We have our aerial view. The zoning, future land use. The current zoning designation of commercial retail C2 does not allow for heavy equipment service and repair. Rezoning to the commercial intense C4 zoning designation would allow heavy equipment service and repair. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and would be compatible with the future land use designations and zoning designations with the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from C2 to C4 is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan. Is allowed in the adopted future land use categories, is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties as the property is subject to development standards of the Land Development Code and meets the locational requirements of the C4 zoning district provided in the LDC and the comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to amend the zoning map from C2 to C4. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning application at the scheduled public hearing on December 13th, 2023. Questions?
Any questions for staff? Commissioner Pickens, do you have your light on?
Oh, no, it didn't turn at all.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. No questions. Is the applicant here? Would you like to speak even though today is the meeting one of two? So we'll be back together at another future date?
I just want to say that-
If you'll pull that up to your voice and then state your name and address for the record.
My name's John Bruce. I live at 96 Prince Hurry Plain in Palm Coast, Florida. I've been working with Loving Contracting. They do clearing work in, in North Florida, and we're looking for a yard and we plan to be good citizens if we come to work. And we plan to be very conservative and we want to make sure that we do everything properly. And appreciate your time. And I also want to make one personal comment is Zach, I know he got the award for being the Employee of the Month, but I can say that he's really helped me and Loving Contracting. And every time we had a question, he got an answer. And he's worked with us very good. And I applaud him being Employee of the Month. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else would like to speak in favor or opposition to this application? Alright, seeing none, we will close that and the board will decide when the next date and time of the meeting will be.
When do we want to hear this? You have the next meeting?
I'm fine with it.
So Commissioners, if I can just remind you too, we're going to hear another rezoning case for the second time on February 27th at 9:00 a.m. Soon thereafter. If you'd like to group this one with that.
We can do it earlier, can't we?
If you recall, it's the PUD for BIM was the applicant off Clear Lake Road. Just a consideration.
There's no sense dragging it out. Let's just go to the next meeting if that's good with the board.
February 13th.
Whatever your pleasure is. Yep, no problem.
Is that your motion, Commissioner Wilkinson? Okay, the motion is February 13th at 9:00 o'clock.
Second.
We have a second. We have a second. Yeah, yeah.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We have a second by Commissioner Pickens, right?
Yes, at 9:00.
Yes. Alright, Mr. Adams, Zach?
I'll be voting no as usual on this because we're not doing it in the evening. If we get the majority vote that we need. It has no bearing on my decision on the actual case before us. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board? We have a proper motion, proper second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Next item is type one subdivision PSA 23-000001 Smith. The retired Honorable Tim Smith.
Does this have to be heard twice also?
No, sir. This is one hearing. Jennifer, you have the floor?
Thank you, sir. This application is for a type one subdivision replant. The applicants are Tim and Darlene Smith. The subject property is located at 137 Pierce Lane East in Palaca. Parcel identification number is 06-10-27-0212-0000-0020. 911 addresses will be assigned to each of the proposed lots once the final plot is approved. The subject parcel is approximately 5.77 acres. Future land use is rural residential. Zoning is residential estate. The applicant requests preliminary and final plot approval for the addition of four lots resulting in a proposed eight lot residential subdivision. The subject parcel to be further divided, which will encompass approximately 5.77 acres, comprises lot two- The subject parcel to be further divided, which will encompass approximately 5.77 acres comprises Lot 2 of the Azaleas on the St. John's platted subdivision. The subdivision was recorded in map book six, page 80, on November 21, 2002. All lots within the subdivision are accessed by a 50-foot wide paved private road and includes drainage improvements. The subdivision is within the rural residential future land use designation and maintains a residential estate zoning designation. The applicant is requesting a replat of Lot 2 to create four additional lots, 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D, ranging between 1.06 acres to 1.79 acres. The resulting residential density is one dwelling unit per 1.44 acres. We have our aerial view. Zoning. Future land use. This is the proposed plot, sorry, it's fuzzy. The proposed re-subdivision of Lot 2 will result in a residential density of one dwelling unit per 1.44 acres. The lands affected by the replat are within the rural residential future land use category, are adjacent to and accessed by a paved road, and are not within the military restriction overlay zone. Ordinance 2005-18 was approved by the Putnam County Board of County Commissioners on August 26, 2005, amending portions of the Land Development Code governing allowed uses in the zoning district and dimensional requirements, along with other land development regulations. The subject division subdivision was approved prior to the implementation of certain regulations governing subdivisions. However, the subject plot does adhere to all current regulations. The request is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Putnam County Comprehensive Plan, is compatible with the surrounding zoning and uses, and is consistent with the requirements of the Putnam County Land Development Code. Staff recommends approval of the request for the preliminary and final plot approval for the replat of Lot 2 of the Azaleas on the St. John's recorded subdivision for the creation of four new lots, 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D resulting in an eight lot subdivision. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning application at the scheduled public hearing on December 13, 2023. Questions?
Thank you, any questions? Okay, we'll move along and we'll close that part, is the applicant here, would you like to speak? I don't know why I said is the applicant here, I'm staring right at you, I apologize.
Retired politician, you offer him a microphone, he's going to take it.
You got that right.
Well, some things you just, you know, you don't get rid of when you're retired.
That's right.
But, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners and staff, thank you, Mr. Baker, your staff. This was a journey that we went on when Darlene and I purchased this property back in 2001 and then subdivided it. This area was actually a horse pasture and on the eastern end my sister lives and on the western end I live. So we've had kind of like this little family compound for a number of years and so as time moves on and I'm trying to do some estate planning and looking forward, I have two children, Ryan and Bren, and I have two nieces, Kaylee and Katie, who have expressed interest to be part of that subdivision and try to keep it as a family subdivision. And so that really was the purpose of this. These lots, as long as I'm here, would never be on the market because I like it just being a horse pasture myself, but knowing that time moves on and what's the best for my family and their longevity, we've decided to try to make this move. I would like to take just a second, if you don't mind, and also say that I was extremely happy to see Mr. Baker's recognition today because my interaction with that department over the last year and a half has been nothing but pleasant. It's a journey that you go through when you're not in planning, understanding all the rules and the specifics that need to be addressed and why you look at them, but every time there was an issue or a question, there was a legitimate reason that those questions were being asked and so I appreciate that, you know, it's coming from government. And in fact, when I started, I'm not sure he was even married yet, now he's got a son. So it just takes a while, but not one part of that was ever unpleasant. And it does drag out, but that's just how that works because you want to make sure you do it right and so that's our goal. And congratulations to Mr. Baker for his recognition today. And so that's our explanation of what we're trying to do and I thank you for your consideration. And, you know, I love all of you and I love this house, so thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Mr. Smith? Okay, seeing none, we're going to open it up for anybody who wants to speak in favor of this application? Or anybody want to speak opposed to this application? Seeing none, we'll close that.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Turner.
And I would like to move approval for a resolution of the County of Putnam, State of Florida approving the final plot of the Azaleas on the St. John's subdivision, providing for severability and an effective date that's not listed.
We have a proper motion?
Second.
Proper second, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed like sign, the ayes have it, thank you very much. Next item will be our rezone REZ 23-00009 Vanderwelt, and I messed that one up.
Vanderworth.
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 How I pronounce it.
Okay, Jennifer, you have the floor.
This application is for a zoning map amendment from commercial retail C2 to commercial intensive C4. The applicant is John Vanderworth. Property is located at 3847 Reed Street in Palaca. Subject parcel is approximately 1.15 acres. Future land use is urban service, zoning is commercial retail C2. The proposal is to amend the zoning map to allow for a diesel mechanic shop. The 1.15 acre parcel is within the urban service future land use designation and is currently developed with a repair shop, however, it is unoccupied. Parcel is located in a portion of corridor where commercial development has occurred on lands that have also maintained a commercial and urban service future land use classification. The surrounding areas are mostly commercial retail C2, commercial intensive C4, and industrial light LI and MI City of Palaca. We have our aerial view. Zoning. Future land use. The current zoning designation of commercial retail C2 does not allow for a diesel mechanic shop. Rezoning to the commercial intensive C4 zoning designation would allow for a diesel mechanic shop, heavy vehicle sales, service, and repair, or heavy equipment sales, service, and repair. The proposed rezoning is compatible with the surrounding uses and would be compatible with the future land use designations and zoning designation within the surrounding area. Staff finds that the proposed rezoning from C2 to C4 is consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the adopted comprehensive plan, is allowed in the adopted future land use categories, is not anticipated to adversely affect the orderly development of the adjacent and surrounding properties as the property is subject to the development standards of the Land Development Code and meets the locational requirements of the C4 zoning district provided in the LDC and comprehensive plan. Staff recommends approval of the request to recommend, to amend the zoning map from C2 to C4. The planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of the rezoning application at the scheduled public hearing on December 13, 2023.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Jennifer, so this, this area traditionally has been a mechanic shop or, and they've also done sales there for many years. So because they're going to do diesel, they have to completely change their, that's.
Correct.
Wow, okay, hmm, okay.
Is it just the diesel or is it heavy repair and that diesel tricks that threshold?
Yeah, so if I can elaborate a little bit, the, the applicant who currently owns the property is, is conveying the land to a gentleman who has a contract with UPS to, to repair the fleet vehicles. So we are going to see, you know, commercial heavy vehicles being repaired on, mostly on that facility. It's worth noting, if these were just standard diesel pickup trucks, they, they would not require this intensive zoning.
Okay, that's what I needed to hear.
It's the possibility of having, you know, semi trucks, dump trucks, other commercial heavy vehicles, yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a statement, normally when we do the C2 to C4, anything to C4, we have the discussion about, you know, all the other uses that could potentially be there, but in this case, I just want to point out, this is one of those locations that actually is right for almost any of the C4 uses, so I fully support this and, you know, I don't even have that concern that I do a lot of times when you got just a C4 use that wants to be put somewhere new because this is surrounded by uses that are similar, so. Just wanted to make sure the public knows that we did our due diligence in that way as well.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Pickens?
Oh, I forgot to turn it off, I'm sorry.
All right, Mr. Adams, that, you hit your button because for some reason I'm not able to change it today. All right, is there any comment from the public or is the applicant here would like to speak? Is there any public comment for or against this application? And seeing no one run up to the podium, we'll close that portion, Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
This one can be done today.
Yes.
Need a second hearing, okay, Mr. Chairman, I move approval of an ordinance of the Putnam, of the County of Putnam, State of Florida, amending the official zoning map for Putnam County Incorporated into Article 2 of the Putnam County Land Development Code, Ordinance 2005-18, rezoning a 1.15 plus or minus acre parcel of land from commercial retail to seat, to retail C2 to commercial intensive C4, providing for the severability and an effective, and an effective date to be determined.
Second.
We have a proper motion, we have a proper second, any further discussion on the motion on ordinance number 2024-006? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed like sign, the ayes have it, thank you very much. And Jennifer, you did a great job, maybe soon you'll be employee of the quarter of the month, right? If you got the right shoes, Commissioner Turner.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Zach, before you leave, could we have a quick discussion on this two-meeting business that we're going through right now? Is there any way or any possibility, I mean, this is, I'm not disagreeing with the interpretation, let's just start there. But it's kind of silly that we're having to go through all this just for even ones that are easy and, and should be approved very easily. Is there any way that we could, on planning commission meetings, that, that one of these cases come before, that, that require two hearings, could we do a joint meeting between the planning commission and the county commission and advertise it as a joint meeting? Then we've got one meeting with the planning commission and, at the planning commission level and one men, and one meeting at the county commission level instead of having two at the county commission level? When, when the case is usually decided at the first county commission meeting in, in a lot of cases.
So Zach probably looks at this more than I do, I have to look at our ordinance more than what the statute requires, but the, I guess the flip side of that is to ask, who would make the decision on when there would be a joint meeting versus when you would break it apart, or would you want all of them to be that way?
No, staff would, staff would make one when their case comes before them, which is a larger than 10 acres or PUD that would trip the threshold for a second county commission meeting. That meeting then, when it went before the planning commission, would be advertised as a dual meeting between the county commission and the, and the planning commission and that would serve as the first meeting for the two-meeting requirement.
Let me take a look into that, I've never, I'll tell you in advance, I've never seen that done, in fact, I've seen it the opposite where, I'll give you the example, Bradford County doesn't have people appointed as their planning commission, so the Board of County Commissioners actually sits at the planning commission and they will have a planning commission meeting 30 minutes before their Board of County Commission hearing and actually do the same thing twice.
Would y'all wait on that until after November, please?
Like I said, let me just take a look into it though, but thank you for the suggestion.
I need to have the consequences or ruffling feathers you don't want to.
Fire the planning commission and it'll all be the planning commission.
No one said that.
I'm not for that.
No one said that, that's not what.
I, I agree with Commissioner Turner because it seems like, you know, we're doing double duty, which I don't mind doing the double duty, but it's, it's not efficient for our residents, we've, they've already gone through, like Mr. Smith just said, he went through it almost two years and while it wasn't a bad process, it was lengthy. And so anything we could do, I know there's a statute that we have to abide by, but if we could just think about and, or see what other counties are doing because it is, it adds to the time and people need to get to work.
Well, yeah, it's just like the one we, we heard today, the first one we heard today. You know, if I was a betting man, I would have said that probably would have passed today. You had a recommendation from the planning commission, you had a recommend, you know, a, you had a unanimous decision from the planning commission, I just, if I was a betting man, I'd bet on.
No one arguing against it.
And nobody here, the for or against or whatever, all we did was hold the people up from being able to go and use their property for what they wanted to do for another, for another few weeks, so I just, you know.
Well, we didn't hold them up, the state statute said that, but I have some, I'm not an attorney, so I.
Well, I think we're the only county that I'm aware of that does this.
Mr. Adams, Zach, you have a comment?
I'm interested to hear the outcome of this, but I mean, we could have accelerated it by holding a meeting sooner for the second hearing. That we have that ability to do that, so if we're going to do a meeting in the evening with the planning commission, why couldn't we just do the second meeting sooner to help that person along, just like you're saying?
Day as long as.
So we do, we do have, we do have some flexibility here to be able to accommodate it quicker for meeting, whether it's morning or afternoon, right, I'm the only one that, I'm the only one that, I'm the only one that votes against, against daytime meetings. But whether it's morning or afternoon, we could accelerate it by having a meeting sooner.
Okay.
So we do have some levity here as a commission.
The idea by statute was to have more public input and the public have an opportunity to see it more often. And, but we'll get to the bottom of this, Mr. Commando will work on it and we'll go from there. So we're going to end our Planning and Development Public Hearing part, move to our public comment on agenda items. Is there anybody in the audience, or do we have any cards, no cards, that anybody would like to speak on agenda items? If so, just please come up and seeing again, no one rushing to the podium, then we will close the public comment portion of this meeting and go into the consent agenda and I'll start with my far right. Commissioner Adams, Zach, do you have any items you'd like to pull?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
I have none.
And I have one, only for the sake of fun, item C, so the, the chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda A, B, D, and E.
Second.
You have a proper motion, proper second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed like sign, the ayes have it. Item C, Mr. Ritchie, would you please come down, he got all dressed up today. I think he's going to deliver the word to us today while he's here and you were supposed to boss walk, but you didn't do that.
I did not, I apologize for that, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Ritchie, real quick, we're just having fun, go ahead.
Well, thank you all for, for pulling it, Mr. Chairman, I really appreciate that, we're looking forward to, if the power does go out in this building for us to remain online.
Thank you, Mr. Ritchie, for the comments and.
There you go.
Chair will entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Move approval of item C, do we have a second? We have a proper second, any further discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed like sign, as Mr. Pickens would say, a little levity in every situation is good, correct?
Exactly.
Okay, moving on to item eight, new business.
Mind if I say that you're not as funny as you think you are?
I think we used to say that to Commissioner Goddard, didn't we? We used to blame that to Commissioner Goddard also.
I absolutely second that, thank you.
You're laughing, so there's something happening. Hey, at least I'm not getting voted out like the House does in Washington, so hey, that's the main thing. Okay, new business administration, 2024 quarterly budget reports.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners.
Can you make this as entertaining?
No, sir.
Okay.
We are here, though, we have finished the first quarter of 2024 and are actually in the beginning stages of planning 2025, so it, it certainly never ends. As we have reviewed numerous times, our budget is cyclical, we typically collect revenues heavy on the front end and so when you look at your budget reports, if we start with the general fund, you'll see that we're about 82%. reports, if we start with the general fund, you'll see that we're about 82% of ad valorem collection right now, and we're only 25% into the year. This is normal, we expect that, and we expect it to trickle in through the rest of the year. Your expenses overall are about 26%. Remember that part of your operating expenses is a percent of revenue collection for those ad valorem taxes. So we expect to see a little bit of a bump in that operating account, a little bit over the 25%, because we've paid 86% or 82% of the ad valorem revenue collection fees. So, all in all, things are right on target with revenue collection and our expenditures for the general fund. You have your reserve balances down there as categorized, so you have some, what we call free reserves, restricted contingency, and then restricted balance, as well as capital outlay dollars, for a total of roughly $12 million in your reserve accounts. This is as of the close of December 31st, because that's when our quarter closed, so anything that has happened from January 1st through today is not reflected in this report. Moving on to the fire fund, I'm sorry, the transportation fund. Again, you'll see that the revenue collection is a little more slow, because they are not ad valorem or tax-heavy. We make those up kind of throughout the year, and our expenditures are at 21%, which is just below where we should be for the quarter one. Your reserves in that account are just under $1 million, at 852. Into the fire fund, again, you see the same reflection in the revenue source, we're at 84% of collections, because that's collected as a fire tax on your ad valorem, or your tax bill, MSBU. And then you're at 18% overall on expenditures for the first quarter, and you've got 1.3 in reserves sitting in the fire fund. Moving on to the sanitation fund, you're at 63% of your collections, and that's because they are more proportionate, so they have a fee base as well as that ad valorem. So you're going to see the heavy collection that's paid through property taxes, but the sanitation is also fee-based, so we have a lot of contracts that are paid monthly, so you're going to see an equal distribution, they're more equal distribution of revenue. And you have 16% of your expenditures expended to date, and then that hefty balance, remember, in captures our restricted closure funds, and so those are not all available for expenditures. And so, that is your reserve balance in the sanitation fund. The 405 water fund, we're about 14% of revenue collection for the year, and 18% of expenditures, so they're about balanced. This, again, is a fund that is a fee-based, user-fee-driven service, so you're not going to see heavy collections upfront, you're going to see pretty methodical or even throughout the year. The last report is the new report, as requested by the Commissioners. As you will all remember, each Commissioner was allocated $200,000 of one-time capital expenditure dollars, and to date, the only expenditures we have had is in District 1. Commissioner Pickens had a drainage project that needed to be completed, for which he was willing to allocate his dollars to, and Commissioner Harvey allocated $25,000 to partner with the Melrose Youth Sports Complex to put LED light infrastructure on that last field. Those are expenditures only, we have had a couple of Commissioners reach out about different quotes or ideas, but when we closed the quarter, those are the only expenditures to date for those Commissioner dollars.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any questions? Mr. Adams, Zach?
Yeah, I just, have we got any update? I know we talked each quarter, actually, about the sanitation escrow future, about how we were working with, I think we had a consultant or something, that was trying to help us determine whether that number is good, or we need more, or potentially less, we were working ideas to narrow that down, have we gotten any update on that?
So every number that, every, I'm sorry, every year, that number changes as to what our long-term expenditures are required. We are still working with a consultant through the process of determining how much has to be readily available liquid, i.e., and how much can be long-term planned.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
But even with that number, it has to be approved by DEP?
That's correct, yes. I mean, and when we do the financials every year, we make adjustments to that number based on what the DEP's long-term closure costs are.
So this number is approved through DEP through the end of 2024, or what is the, how long is that number good for?
DEP, and it's an annual, every year.
Those numbers have to be turned in September, or they're requested, and so, yeah, you adjust every year.
He's going to talk, bud.
You're going to talk, you need to come up. Mr. Tilton? And if you will, state your name again.
No, I don't have it.
No, your title is fine.
Jay Tilton, Solid Waste Director. So, yeah, those numbers are due every year in September, it's an adjustment, they use an inflation factor. Right now, it's kind of a Roman target, I'll be honest with you, because they've increased the inflation factor almost triple, is what we're dealing with. Some of the things that we are doing, and what we're working with the consultant on, though, is we're going back and looking at the numbers for those total costs, like closure and things like that, and trying to see if they are realistic with the way that our old consultant was doing it. We were able to look at saving some monies on the post-closure care, and so then, one of the things that we're doing now, and something will be brought to you guys in the near, I hope in the next year, is opportunities to save money on closure costs, like delegating a certain part of the property that we have out there as a bar pit, so we don't actually have to purchase that dirt. And I've heard that that could save us a couple million dollars. So those are some, but those studies, you have to put a big study together and have people come in and drill, and make sure that the dirt meets the spec and everything for the different type of materials that we need for closing the landfill out. So we're continuing to work on that, but that number is done every year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Turner?
Yes. Julie Anne, how concerned do you are in the 101 transportation fund, about only having 12% into the second quarter of the year? Is that, I don't remember it being that low previously.
Yeah, well, you're looking at the aggregate total of those collections, and so, if you're looking at taxes, which is the main source, you're seeing they're at 27%,
Right.
and then permits, fees, and assessments are at 29. Your inner government is where you're low, and that's a function of just normal business. So I'm not concerned at all. We have seen a declining amount of revenue in the transportation fund, year over year, for the last three. So I am concerned about the longevity of the transportation fund sustaining itself. However, I am not concerned as to where we stand in revenue collection today.
Good, thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? Thank you very much for that presentation. We'll move on to administration, SMA request to approve building renovations. Nancy, you gonna?
Nancy Russo, SMA Healthcare, 330 K Larken Drive, Palatka. We received a three-year grant from the Health Resources and Services Administration, also known as HERSA, I'm being mindful of the acronyms, to develop a neonatal abstinence syndrome program, which is also known as NAS. As you can see from the information in your packet, there is a high prevalence of NAS in Putnam County, which is why we applied for this grant opportunity. Due to this grant, we will be able to create five employment opportunities with a program supervisor, part-time primary care provider, and LPN, a prevention specialist, and a healthcare navigator. We will also be contracting with Dr. Tuisi for a midwife and healthy start of Elachua County, to provide a part-time nurse to work with the mothers and their babies in the home. But in order to provide these much-needed services, we had to come up with a way to increase our office space availability for this purpose. It may be difficult to tell from the existing floor plan why we have requested these renovations, but the offices on the top side of the diagram need to be renovated to allow for adequate exam rooms, and the large room will allow for additional office space to be created for the primary care provider, nurse, and midwife. The bottom side of the building already has four office spaces, but you have to walk through the first office to get to the second office, which is not conducive to HIPAA standards. So this design allows for private entrances into each of the four offices. Since this is a county-owned building, we are asking your permission to make these modifications to allow for enough space to run this program. HERSA has allowed for $100,000 of the 1.5 million three-year award for this purpose.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions? All right. What's your pleasure?
Motion to move.
We do.
I make a motion that we approve this as presented?
We have proper motion, do we have a second?
One second.
We have a proper second, any further discussion? Hearing?
Nancy, I do.
Okay, Commissioner Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. I know that you have struggled getting staff. Do you feel like this is going to be an issue with this program?
No, we've already secured three of the five staff.
Okay, very good, all right. Thank you.
Ms. Nancy, the only thing I want to say is, kind of gives me a little heartburn when people do work in county buildings without procurement. I understand that you're doing this outside of that, but please know that there's no liens can be placed on a county building. So this is our building at the end of the day, and we will be following those building inspections and all. Okay? So, we have proper motion, we have proper second, any further discussion, Mr. Turner?
I have concerns along the same lines. I realize that we can't require them to go through county procurement on this, because it's grant funds that don't come to the county, but it is our building, and I think that with them not going through procurement, I don't know how we're going to make sure that, they can't place a lien on a county building if something falls apart on the deal, right? I mean, the contractor can't place a lien on a county building if it turns out that he doesn't get paid for the project, or whatever the case may be. I mean, he can't place a lien on a government building, can he?
No, he cannot, you're correct. He cannot adversely possess or place a lien on government property.
Okay. So, we don't need to require bonds on it to make sure, because he can't place a lien on a government building?
Correct.
Okay, so I had.
Well, I mean, whether you require a bond's up to you, but, no, he cannot place a lien on.
Well, usually, you would only require a bond if you wanted to protect your building or protect the creditors or whatever, but this is not county money, so I don't really care about that, that part of it, from the county standpoint. But I just want to make sure that they can't file a lien on the county if this deal falls apart. So that's the only reason I would have required a bond if they could have.
I agree. All right, so we have proper motion, proper second.
I have one more question, I apologize.
Further discussion, Ms. Wilkinson, you have the floor.
Thank you. What's the timeframe, the turnaround time for you to have these renovations done? If it's in the package, I missed it, I apologize.
No, it's not in the packet. We are expected to start services in April, but not every one of those services needs to be provided. We can start a ramp up.
Okay, but when would the renovations be completed, estimated?
After the approval today, I need to submit it to HERSA for their approval to move forward with the payment for that, and then I was told it would be 45 days from start.
Okay, very good, thank you.
There was one thing I wanted to mention, that I think in the quote, that when I read it, basically, that any additions and all would be above and beyond what was quoted here. Again, the county is not going, and I'm not trying to nitpick it to death, but we have seen price overruns on work being done in county buildings in the past few years, based on the economy. That's my only concern. But I'm done with my concerns. So we have a proper motion, proper second.
Mr. Harvey? I got a question.
Mr. Pickens, I'm sorry.
So what we're talking about that is, when you're talking about that they could not put a lien on the county property in case something goes wrong, what if something does go wrong and it ends up in litigation? Where's the county on that one?
Mr. Commando, you have the.
Sorry, I was trying to. Because they can't use the building, and it's a stalled project, I guess. Then it would be our responsibility to fix it. Okay?
Would you please, would you say that again? I guess my hearing ain't cut out.
I mean, if there's any reason why the project stalls or isn't completed, it then become, because it's our building, it could create a situation where maybe it can't be rented, you'd have to fix it somehow. So you may want to consider a bond for that reason.
Well, currently, the motion does not have a bond inside there, but I'm willing.
I'm giving it some thought right now, because I'm very concerned if this gets in the middle and that it's not finished, or whatever the case may be, or that Ms. Russo's organization falls out with her contractor, and we didn't follow county procurement, which we can't do, because it's not our money, but it is our building. If it got half-done and not completed, I have some serious concerns that without some kind of protection here, that we could just be in the middle of it, whether we want to be there or not. That's what I was trying to lay out earlier with my comments, but.
Am I allowed to make any additional comments?
Not right now, Ms. Russo, let us hammer this out real quick, so.
I wouldn't mind hearing what she had to say, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind.
That's the will of the board, well, Ms. Russo?
We have the ability to move 25% of the 1.5 million into any other line category that we need to, like if the renovations came to more than that, we could request from HERSA to move that money to pay for the additions. Also, if we don't finish this, we can't get any of the money. So it is very important to SMA to make sure that this project gets completed in a timely manner to the specifications, because we have been a recipient of HERSA awards for the past six years, and we wouldn't want to jeopardize that for future grants, because we are already looking at future grants for the county from them.
So let me ask you this, based on your statement, if you don't mind. 25% of?
1.5 million is the total grant.
So you're looking around $300,000. So in my mind, you could actually put up a credit to the county out of that money, correct? That would guarantee that if, and I don't care who the contractor is, that makes no difference to me, but we have seen, again, the reason my concern is, because we have seen cost overruns on buildings, and a lot, you know, just recently, one of them was stalled out, and it was our building. But they did get a chance to finish it and move forward, but prices are up, and help is hard to find, and no matter who the contractor is, we just need a guarantee that we're not going to have to go in there and spend taxpayer money to fix up a building. That's my only concern. If we were doing it, I would have no concern, I will tell you that. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor?
How long has SMA been in the building?
I'm sorry?
I'm asking her a question.
I didn't hear your.
How long has SMA been in the building?
Okay.
About 12 years.
About 12 years? I mean, I think SMA has proven to be a good partner. They've utilized the building for 12 years. I don't see where, I get where we're going with this, but I don't really see how it's overly relevant to $100,000 of our project. We have plenty of space that the county owns that's not updated, that when someone does re-lease it, they redo it, like we have just down the hall here. So it's not abnormal if a lease came back up and they left to have to renovate it again, and that would usually be under the person that leases the property's expense. So I have no problem with this the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Turner, you have a question?
I agree that we probably need to try to do something, but to ask SMA to put up a deposit of the amount of money or whatever to cover that, I think is unfair and unrealistic. You know, a bond is not that much money, as long as, I feel like most contractors that do this type of work are bondable, so it would basically be, if it's $100,000, I don't know what his bonding costs are, but it would be a certain percentage of that bonding cost, depending on what his deal is for that. So, the, I think that it needs to just be discussed, do we require a bond of a contractor to work on a county building or not? With it just being a $100,000 renovation and not, if it was $200,000, and if it was county money, and I don't know if the performance bond requirement would kick in with it not being county funds or not, but statute requires any county project over $200,000 requires them to have a bond. So I think that's really the only discussion, that it's not required at this point, and it's not really that big of a project, so I guess I'm on the borderline here, whether we do it or not. I mean, I just am.
All right, well, we have a proper motion in a second. Is there any further discussion? I'm going to call the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item C, Larry Harvey, that's me, ratification of emergency state order. Mr. Commando, will you handle that, please?
Yes, sir. Our code allows for the declaration of a local state of emergency. Traditionally, we ask the board to come back and convene an emergency called meeting. However, with the situation of the storm that was coming through, literally just hours However, with the situation of the storm that was coming through literally just hours after our last meeting, our code also allows for the chairman, as next in line, to sign that declaration. So this is just... And part of that ordinance says that it'll be brought before the commission for ratification at the next regularly scheduled meeting. So that is this order that was presented with storm coming through. At the time, we just wanted to make sure, and it was advice of the county administrator and myself, that we go ahead and sign the order to make sure that any need for possible federal funding to reimburse would be open. Fortunately, we did not see any significant effects from the storm, but that's the process that we went through. So I'd ask for a motion to approve and a vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Right, moving into appointments. Commissioner Adams, Zach? Mr. Turner, you have a comment?
Just have one comment on the last item, Rich. The only reason that I brought this up at all was because, and I don't think I did to you, but I did bring it up, was that I just wanted to make sure that if we have needed it in the future, that we do things the proper way where we don't lose that, you know, lose our state of emergency because we didn't properly notify. I just remember that when I got appointed back six years ago, they literally swore me in at the judge's chambers instead of at the county commission meeting, which was regularly scheduled, and they were holding a meeting down here up for me to come get in on that emergency meeting because a hurricane was coming. And so that's why I wanted to make sure that we know in the future if this happens. I don't have a problem at all with the chairman doing it and ratifying it the next one, like you just said, but I didn't know that's the way we could have done it.
Yes, sir. So normally, I mean, the situation you're describing is a little bit differently. Normally, when hurricanes come through, the governor's executive order is days in advance, and we have a little bit more time. But the governor's executive order came out literally, I think, towards the end of our meeting. I hadn't seen it until we had adjourned, and at that point, we only had hours. So yes, you're right. We could have used it at that time.
Long as we're covered. That's all I... In the future.
And the chair has made a mistake. The vice chair has shown me my error of my ways. So codes enforcement case, Thomas, fine reduction on codes case 2011-00981.
Mr. Chairman, could we ask again if there's anybody present on any one of these cases?
We will. They will.
All right, thank you.
What case are you involved in? The first one or the second? Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, Mr. Moore.
Address is 141 Denise Circle. Property owner's name is Kim Wall. A violation was unsafe structure. The original fine amount was $11,178.50. We had a tax surplus that we actually received for $3,260. The total cost of enforcement action was $1,0219. Property owner should recently purchased the property. It's now compliant and requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Thank you. The Walls, would you like to speak? Yes, Mr. Turner.
If we take the money out of the surplus in taxes, it would be paid... We wouldn't have to put the 90-day deal in there because Matt would pay it within 90 days. It comes from him.
Yes.
Okay, so basically if we take it out of the surplus...
Yes, sir.
There would be no cost to the owners at all, but it would just come out of the surplus taxes, and it would come from the clerk's office.
Yes, sir. I already have it. I would just take it and return the excess back to the clerk's office.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
The Walls, would you like to speak? You've been patient to sit there for...
I just want to say that...
State your name and address.
I'm sorry, Kim Wall. And we're here, we're over here from Palm Coast, and we purchased this land with intention to put kind of more affordable housing up in this area because can't afford anything in Palm Coast anymore, in our zone, forget it. So we're just... My husband's a contractor. We're realtors also, and just something, sorry, that we're trying to move forward and do. This lot, we bought on auction. We did our research. This lien was unbeknownst to us. It's very old, and we were shocked when we heard about it. So we really appreciate that you...
Got a question. Did you do a municipal lien search?
Well, so I learned the correct way of doing it after the fact, but we did do some online research that we thought was correct.
Okay.
And then upon speaking to the county, then I found out, okay, we did that wrong. So we did not find this lien. We found others, the smaller liens that we dealt with, but not this one, so.
I was just curious. Since being a realtor, I thought...
In the future, I will definitely know correctly.
But in fairness, when you're buying tax deeds, you don't know which ones you're going to be successful on. So if you went down...
It's true.
If you went down and did a municipal lien search on every one, on every tax deed in the whole thing, which sometimes there's over 100 of them, you would have more money in tax lien searches than you... In municipal lien searches than what... On properties that you weren't successful in buying.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I can understand how one of these can get by you. I just really can. In fact, I was looking at one last month that I was interested in, and I actually called the codes enforcement to ask them, was there a lien on that property? Because they would have that record, and there wasn't, but I didn't end up doing anything. But still, there are ways to look at them and whatever, if you have one or two that you're interested in. But if you're just going after lots, it's very difficult because of the amount of money and the time that it would take to do it.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Wall, let me say this. All we want is compliance. We want things linked up. And, you know, the process is lengthy. Our citizens don't understand that in some cases, but we just want compliance and move this property into a usable situation. So is there any more comments you'd like to make?
That's it. That's our intention as well.
Welcome to Putnam County. Thank you.
All right, so board, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, with regards to case number 2011-00981, I move that we reduce the fine to $1,219, which is to be taken out of the tax surplus received.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Next case, Mr. Moore, is the applicant here on this case?
I don't know, sir.
I don't really need to hear it unless the board does.
The applicant's not here. We'll just go ahead. Mr. Turner, you have a motion you want to make?
Yes, sir. You need to ask just for the public record if there's anybody here to comment.
I did. Is there anybody here to comment on this case? Okay, moving on.
Hey, thank you. Mr. Chairman, with regards to case number 2020-00610, I move that we reduce the fine to $1,736 to if it's paid within 90 days.
Second.
Proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right, good. Now we can go to our appointments. Mr. Adams, Zach?
For waterways and trails, I move to appoint Linda Crater.
Thank you.
Is that your only one?
For today, yes.
Okay, Mr. Turner?
I have none today.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Ms. Wilkinson?
For zoning board of adjustment, I'd like to appoint Willie McGahey.
And that is your appointment?
Yes.
All right, good deal. And I have none today. Now comes our time with public comments on miscellaneous items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring matters to the attention of the board. It's not reasonable to expect the board will engage or debate or deliberation in matters of what the board has received. No prior information as part of the agenda. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Public comments are convenient... Cards are conveniently placed at the meeting room entrance and should be submitted to Ashley, our clerk, prior to the meeting, if the deputy clerk assists to the right of the podium. Is there any public comment cards? No? No? And is there any public wishing to speak? If none, we will close that meeting, that part of our meeting, and turn it over to the Honorable Clerk of the Court, Mr. Matt Reynolds.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have nothing to inform the board about today, so thank you.
Thank you, sir. County Attorney, Mr. Rich Commando?
Just I know that this week is Rural County Days on Legislature, and I wish you all have a good trip and productive time over there.
Look forward to it. Thank you, sir. County Administrator, Mr. Terry Seuss.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to piggyback on our attorney, Mr. Commando's comments, you know, we'll be leaving later today to go to Tallahassee. I sent a text message out to the commissioners yesterday that we're going to be attending Rural Days with a tentative schedule. We're continuing to add to that. We just got another one today. I'll confirm it later. And each of you know where we'll be and at what time, but looking forward to another successful trip to Tallahassee.
Thank you. Ms. Young, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Grimes? Okay, good deal. Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Adams, Zach?
I have none today.
Mr. Turner?
Yes, I'd just like to reiterate the congratulations to Zach on his Employee of the Quarter. I think it's very well deserved. He does a good job. For those of... That haven't been around here back in the days when you'd walk in the door and the first thing out of their mouth was, "You can't do that." Well, I haven't asked you what I told you what I wanted yet. Well, you still can't do that. So that's completely a different deal over there right now. When you walk in the door, and it's the building department also, but the planning department, they've got it down where you walk in the door and they try to figure out a way to help you get where you want to go. That's the way it should be.
That's the way it should be.
So they're doing a good job. I also want to congratulate Sam on his retirement, and that's all I really have today.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman Harvey. The only thing I have was really to commend the emergency services. I got a phone call at 8:30 this morning for the meeting, and I knew the person, and we'd had different discussions about road issues and other complaints, and I just knew it was going to be a complaint, and it wasn't. He really was to commend the emergency services yesterday. He had a spell, a situation around 1 o'clock on Fisherman's Cove Road, and he said the responders were there in about five to seven minutes. It was a young man and a young woman. He didn't know who the other person was. He didn't tell me. But he said they responded to his needs. They were very polite, very capable, and he felt he was in really good hands. So that's always positive. So if you can find out who was on that call, if that's possible, Richard and Tina and JR, and commend them, that they did a very good job, enough for him to call me this morning to tell me. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pickens. Ms. Wilkinson?
Thank you. I've got a few things. First, I'd like to thank Public Works for working with FDOT. And when I first got elected, we set up a meeting and sat down with FDOT about the intersection of 309D Garden Road and Highway 100. It's one of the worst areas in the county for traffic accidents. And as we know in government, things take a little bit of time, but we've got flashing lights up there now, and hopefully that will save some lives in the future and prevent some accidents. So I just want to say thank you to your staff.
Year and a half?
Year and a half.
That's warp speed.
I know. That's warp speed. That's pretty good. But anyway, I just want to say thank you to your staff, JR, for you and everybody who worked on that project. And also, I want to also thank EOC for sharing. We had a cold weather shelter a couple days. There was this week, we've had cold weather events. And Westminster Hall and First Baptist, I mean, First Presbyterian Church downtown brought in a total of about 39 people over a three-day period. And EOC helped get the word out and helped spread the word. We got it out on social media. Of course, Brother Life told the clients as they were coming through the line, you know, that this was available. And that's collaboration, in my opinion, when we've got the private sector working with the nonprofits and the churches and I really... And the public, and I really appreciate EOC working on trying to get that information out. So that was... I appreciate that. And then we're having a pet adoption upcoming in Hastings Main Street on Saturday, February 7, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., and the Putnam Animal Control Services will be there with some animals. So I just want to say thank you for that. That's coming up. Good. And then one more thing. I do want to just... I'm not asking for anybody's... I mean, we can have discussion, but I did bring the bridge light proposal up to the city, so I'm giving you guys the update. At the last city commission meeting, I did bring it up. It was received, I thought, pretty well through the city commissioners. They liked the idea, and they didn't tell me no, so I thought that was good. And of course, it was something we had discussed under comments, but we haven't had a vote, and I told them that. And we talked about collaboration. One commissioner would have liked to see us sit down around the table, but I don't see that that's a lot of moving parts to get 10 commissioners and to sit around and have a discussion about the bridge lights. But it is an eight, up to $18 million project that FDOT is willing to fund. They would handle the illumination of the lights from the start to end. It's simply that we... Somebody has to take the lead on the maintenance agreement. And so that's the way I proposed it to them, asking them to take the lead. And they said they would take that into consideration. They did say they would like more than a 50-50 split if we were able to go forward, and I don't know what that number would be. However, that was the discussion we had, so.
Thank you.
Higher than 50-50 because their thought process was that we have a bigger budget. So whatever the number is, you know, that's the thought process is, you know. The one thing about the lights is whoever signs the maintenance agreement gets to work with DOT on the coloring of the lights. So I... And I let them know, you know, that the city really has a lot to benefit from that and taking that lead. And so hopefully, they'll do that. So I don't know if you want to have discussion or... But that was the discussion that I had.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, Zach, you have a comment?
Yeah, so the last part they just said is exactly the reason why I think we need to be on the maintenance agreement. That's just my opinion. It's one person that'll be voting on this. I would not vote yes if the city had the maintenance agreement.
Okay.
All right, we'll move on, and thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson, for that update. Do want to bring to mind, look at your calendars, commissioners, I'd like to call a workshop meeting on Tuesday, the 20th, at 9:30. There's a few items that we want to go to. FDOT has some items. They want to talk to us, and they'll be in the room at 10:00. But there's some things we can get started on prior to that, so if your calendars are free for February 20th at 9:30.
It's a Tuesday?
The Tuesday. And if we're good with that, then we'll move forward, and that's...
I'm available.
Okay. Okay, so we'll schedule that for 9:30, and agenda will be coming out with topics of discussion. If there's anything you'd like to put on there, please let administration know, and we'll go over that and get that handled. Don't foresee it being a full day, but if we are productive and we'll move forward at that point with Commissioner Turner, I just don't want to have a meeting to have a meeting, but there's something we can do to move our county forward. 9:30 in the morning.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Prior to setting a meeting time, would it be all right if we looked at our upcoming schedule? Because we do have a DRC that morning.
A what?
A DRC meeting that morning, that same morning. That part of our staff may be required to be at. We don't know. I'll need to look at the agenda.
A DRC meeting?
Yes, sir. So we may need to look at maybe 10:00 or 10:30, but let me look at the DRC if that's okay with you, sir.
Well, I think we'll go ahead with 9:30, and then, you know, we'll just work around the topics of the DRC, okay?
That's fine, but you'll have a lot of... Your deputy administrators and department heads will be in DRC. I just wanted to share that.
Okay.
You stand a whole lot better chance, boss.
Exactly. All right, good deal, and I'm looking forward to going to Rural Days. It's one of the highlights that Representative Bobby Payne started for the rural counties in Florida. And truly, it's an opportunity for a lot of us, and there is a lot of people from Putnam County going this year, to highlight and showcase Putnam County and the things we have to offer, as well as all rural Florida. So looking forward to that. Will be a busy, busy few days, asking for money, thanking people who have helped us, and showcasing our county, and it's always a big benefit for us to be able to showcase Putnam County. And that's the end of my comments. At 1:00 today, we have an executive session over in the county conference room. We'll open here and go over there for a executive session meeting. And if there's nothing further for the agenda, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.